Okay.
You're sitting.
Um, the CUNY proficiency exam was approved by the board in 1997 and first implemented in 2001. Its purpose was to certify that students who have accumulated forty-five academic credits were ready for upper division work. Because every student must pass it in order to graduate, it is what we call a high-stakes exam. In November 2009, the Chancellery convened the CUNY proficiency task force to conduct an evaluation of the CPE's efficacy. The task force has recently issued its report. After prolonged discussions and careful data analysis, the task force came to the conclusion that although the CPE served a valuable purpose at an earlier stage in CUNY history, when it was important to demonstrate that students moving on to upper-level courses were qualified to do so, it has become redundant as a certification exam. Pass rates are closely correlated with grade point averages, and an overwhelming proportion of students who take the exam pass it. Also, as a locally designed and administered exam, the CPE results cannot be compared to those of other colleges and universities. In addition, because it is given once to each student, it cannot measure how much students learn at CUNY. Finally, the rising costs of administering the CPE, nearly $5 million per year, present a concern. Therefore, we are proposing that use of the CPE be discontinued immediately. The Central Office of Academic Affairs, in consultation with faculty, will explore the possibility of instituting a nationally-normed, psychometrically-sound exam that measures the value added by a CUNY education. Further, it is important to recognize that no single-test instrument taken in isolation can fulfill all assessment purposes. Effective assessment requires a battery of different tools in accordance with each program's needs and goals.
Any comment?
Questions?
Any question? Any comment?
Are the, the $5 million annual cost, is there, did the study look at other colleges and universities' average cost? Is it on a selective basis? Is it universal? How does that cost compare with other comparable school exams? Not CPEs. I take it they're other best practices?
Right. There are other, other colleges and universities, no one else is using the CPE exam, only CUNY is using the CPE exam. And that's one of the reasons that it's so expensive. The vendor, which is Pearson, that handles it for us, is not able to spread the cost among other colleges and universities. All the cost must be directed at CUNY. And also, there's only one vendor who's willing to do it for us, so that vendor has a monopoly and charges us a great deal of money. And we expect that if we were to continue to use the CPE, it would be even more than $5 million next year. Other colleges and universities are using alternative exams, which are much less expensive to administer, and that are nationally-normed, and that measure value-added, in that they measure, they're given at the beginning of students' careers and at the end of students' careers at the college or university, so that they can determine how much a student learns at that college or university. We, you know, the cost for another institution, a non-CUNY institution, is going to vary, dependent on how big that institution is. You know, how many students it has, and how they use the test, and which test it is. We have done some estimates ourselves for if we were to use an alternative test, and we estimate that that cost would be no more than $1 million a year.
Any other comment? Yes?
I was on fiscal until this year. It's a pleasure to join CAPRA. Fiscal, when we had, last year, this came up for renewal, and it had been $1 million a year, and it was suddenly jumped, by Pearson, to $5 million.
Right.
And I remember saying that was equal to eighty, eight-zero faculty lines.
Exactly.
Which, the monopoly situation is, is really terrible. I'm glad to know that, and not surprised, that the pass rate and the scores seem to correlate with faculty grades, because that's the true certification, is the grades that faculty give our students. There has been some concern expressed by faculty that the wonderful support services that were established at the colleges to help ensure that the students were prepared for the CPE, since it was such a high-stakes exam, would continue, such as the writing sentence, which were funded quite well comparatively, compared to before the CPE, for example. So that's the main concern I've heard from faculty. And the other is that there be, and I'm sure with Executive Vice Chancellor Loeb, real faculty involvement in deciding what, if any, test would be chosen instead of the CPE, and real involvement of the university faculty set it. So I, I don't oppose this. I, I know from my own students, it really focused them on preparing, and, and I thought it was very helpful, but I think they need those eighty faculty if we're going to spend $5 million a year, as opposed to the tests. So I support this.
Okay. Could I address a bit?
Yes.
What you were talking about, asking about? There are a number of, as you said, practices that were instituted at the university to help prepare students for the CPE. One is writing across the curriculum, and another, known as WAC, and another is writing in the disciplines, known as WID. And these are programs that are well-established across CUNY. It turns out that since, in the ten years since the CPE was instituted, all but three colleges have made writing-intensive courses a degree requirement, and it's now a requirement at all those colleges. All colleges, all of them, offer mini-sections of writing-intensive courses every semester, and some majors have been designated as writing-intensive, so that I think we can say, you know, with great certainty, that in the ten years that have passed, CUNY now takes writing and critical thinking skills very seriously. WAC and WID will remain in place with strong backing from the Office of Academic Affairs. In addition, colleges will continue to focus on developing these skills through individual coursework, including specifying learning outcomes in the major and learning outcomes in general education as well. Just because we're discontinuing the CPE doesn't mean that we're discontinuing emphasis on all this. Another change that's happened in the past ten years since the CPE was instituted is middle states' accreditors' great emphasis on learning outcomes and evidence of learning outcomes. And that evidence, middle states occasionally expressed some usefulness of the CPE, but they were probably more interested in the course and program assessments that the faculty have been doing and have started doing in the past ten years. As I said, we are going to be looking for an alternative test that we will use primarily for assessing general education knowledge, and that will enable each college, for the first time, to be able to measure learning gains at that college, which will be a big advantage. The colleges also provide support for students' skill development through their learning centers, writing centers, math centers, and basic skill centers. Now, it is true that the CPE preparation that was offered in such centers will be discontinued. The centers are not discontinuing. And this means that the resources that they were previously using to specifically prepare people for the CPE test can now be used for other purposes that might perhaps be more educationally valuable. And there are people also who are employed on the campuses who can be used in this way. Many colleges have encouraged students to form study groups to prepare for the CPE. The facilitation of study groups and peer mentoring will continue at the colleges, but just no longer focused on the CPE. And we're also going to be, a final thing we're going to be doing, is the Office of Institutional Research is going to be maintaining a library of test forms of the CPE, and so that if a program, say, a writing program, wanted to use the CPE for assessing, we have a large number of test forms now, and the Office of Institutional Research will provide assistance with training faculty to score the test and technical advice, and also data for benchmarking, should programs wish to use it.
Good. I was going to ask you if those tests, because it's ten years' worth of really good tests, would be available.
Yes.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Thank you.
I understand that the CPE, CPE is no longer relevant, not only to the university, but also to the student, and it's very expensive. So we are moving to discontinue the CPE. So all in favor of discontinuing this program?
Aye.
Oppose? Scary.
Okay. Next item.
Next item?
It's the number three.
Kingsborough Community College and Brooklyn College ASVS Joint Program, the Earth and Planetary Science and Geology.
Okay. This dual joint program provides a seamless pathway for Kingsborough community students wishing to enter the existing four-year degree program in geology at Brooklyn. After earning their baccalaureate degree, students will be ready for entry-level positions in the geotechnical industry, as well as with governmental agencies such as the National Weather Service. Students will also be well-equipped for continuing their education at the graduate level, for example, at Brooklyn College, which already offers a master's in geology.
Any comment? All in favor of this program?
Aye.
Oppose? Yelling carrier.
My sincere apologies.
You weren't learning.
Continue. Don't let me.
We're, we're, you can take a look. We're, I guess we're up to.
Okay. Fantastic. We're trying to avoid the hot potato issue. That's all.
Successfully with my.
You want to do it again? Two-way. Okay. Information item by the Executive Vice Chancellor?
Okay. For my report today, I want to focus on some of the significant issues that are ahead for CAPRA. We're conducting a reexamination of some CUNY-wide policies that relate to the academic structure of the university as a whole. And in the coming months and beyond, we will be recommending changes in such policies that will enhance the learning and success of our students, sometimes saving significant amounts of funds as well. We want to increase standards for student work while at the same time ensuring that the university functions more efficiently. We want to enhance the ability of students to move easily through the system to obtain a valued and valuable degree. There is an example, there has been an example of one such action today, the rescission of the requirement for each CUNY student to pass the CPE. As mentioned earlier in that meeting, in this meeting, if that resolution passes the full board at the end of this month, we will immediately constitute a CUNY-wide committee of experts to identify a new assessment test for our students. We're committed to assessing well the learning of our students, and doing it in a fiscally-responsible and accountable way. We need to assess carefully what students actually learn, ensuring that we maintain high standards of educational quality. Another example of such an action, one that happened last year, is when the board approved the ability of City College and Hunter to offer PhD degrees, and for Hunter to offer the Doctor of Public Health degree, instead of just the Graduate Center being authorized to offer such degrees. We have since established a policy in which any campus could, with central approval, offer professional doctorates, such as the Doctor of Public Health Degree, the Doctor of Physical Therapy Degree, and the Doctor of Nursing Practice Degree. Together, these are actions which are allowing the campuses to evolve, so as to each fill their best niche within the overall mission of CUNY. But we need to do much more. Our retention and graduation rates, particularly at the community colleges, are too low and are not increasing quickly enough. Of the students who do graduate, too many of them are graduating with too many excess credits beyond the number needed for graduation. This prolongs their entry into the workforce and/or graduate programs, costs students extra money, and uses up CUNY's valuable resources. We know that some of these problems are due to problems associated with students transferring from one CUNY campus to another. Despite the best efforts of this board and of the CUNY administration, the intra-CUNY transfer policies are often impenetrably and stultifyingly complex. And students often, after a many-month-long evaluation period, aren't given credit for courses taken at a previous CUNY campus. Similarly, policies regarding who must enter remediation and how students can exit remediation are bewilderingly discrepant across the CUNY campuses. And how students with remedial needs are admitted to our campuses can sometimes present these new admits with a maze of unpalatable choices. Moving students as expeditiously as possible through their programs to degree completion is also a function of course availability, having the courses they need available for them. As a university system, we can do a better job in making courses available to all students at CUNY, no matter on which campus the students reside. This is one of the reasons that we are working hard at increasing online courses and hybrid courses. Hybrid courses are ones that are partially online and partially face-to-face. Hybrid and online courses, although technically associated with a particular campus, can be of use to students from throughout the system. At the same time, we are entering into a new phase of our recent partnership with the New York City Department of Education, engaging in specific actions that will better ensure that their students coming to CUNY are better prepared for college-level work. This work has recently been funded by a $3 million grant from the Gates Foundation. For all of these reasons, in the future, you are likely to see policy-change proposals that relate to how students enter CUNY, how they are placed in college-level or remedial courses, how they move among the CUNY campuses, and how they receive credit for prior CUNY work. We, in the Central Office of Academic Affairs, look forward to working together with you, the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research of the CUNY Board of Trustees, to make our goals a reality through systematic, evidence-based change. We very much appreciate your input and support in this work.
What is the average years that they graduated?
Oh. The average years.
What percentage is that, more or less?
Let me put it this way. Of students who enter an associate program at CUNY as a freshman, within six years later, about thirty percent have received a degree.
Six years later?
Yes.
How is that compared with other universities? I believe that all community colleges have the same problem.
For community colleges, urban community colleges, this is very similar. But that is no excuse. We need to do better.
Well, now we have a Vice Chancellor, Marti, I think that the Central Office is very conscious of their situation, and that's why they are bringing the Chancellor, Vice Chancellor Marti into the main office, and I'm sure that with his experience, he should be able to help the community college to raise the graduation rate.
For the final, just the final part of my report, you should have in front of you the Institutes and Centers Report that I promised you at last June's meeting, and I'll just summarize the results for you. This, there, this is a report on the institutes and centers at all the CUNY campuses. There are one hundred and forty-nine of them listed. The total funding for these centers and institutes is approximately $92 million, but some of that is capital funds. If you exclude the capital funds, it's about $85 million. About eighty-five percent of the $85 million comes from external sources, sources outside of CUNY. In fact, most of the centers and institutes are receiving more external than internal funds, way more. Those that are not usually have extensive activities involving education of students, of actually giving courses. For example, on page two, if you want to look at an example, there is the Newman Real Estate Institute at Baruch. This institute has $872,000 in campus funding and $224,000 in external funding, but this institute gives a significant number of courses in real estate to both undergraduate and graduate students. So that concludes my report.
Was a question raised? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Justice Shorter?
Was a question raised, it must not have been as to where these fit within the institution, within CUNY overall? In other words, how these centers mesh or don't? I guess the purpose is what defines what they do.
Well, there's a difference, I should say, there's a difference between a center and an institute.
No, I understand. Oh, there's a difference between a center and an institute.
Right. A center is an entity that functions only on one campus, and an institute is an entity that involves activity from several campuses, although it has a home base.
Right. And who, how are they governed? Independently? Do they have independent boards, or are they governed by the university?
They, they generally have, they usually have a director who reports on that campus. If they're, if they're a center, they come as an information item for, to this committee, and if they're an institute, they come to this committee as an action item for approval.
But in a mini kind of institute, they have an advisory board.
Yeah. Some of them have boards, but not all of them.
So does Newman. Newman has advisory board. Newman Institute.
No one was.
I'd like to comment. When all these centers and institutes were presented, all of them, or almost all of them were supposed to be self-funded?
Yeah. Well, they're supposed, yes, they're supposed to.
Okay. Let's assume for now.
Yeah.
So on page five, we have a few examples. While the overall percentage is good, eighty-five percent of fifteen, page five, we have Brooklyn College Center for Studying in Brooklyn. I'm sure some people in Brooklyn thought it was a good idea, but they're not contributing. The next group, Children's Study Center, I don't know that we're the only people in the country doing a study of how teaching different disciplines, but whoever proposed it stopped paying. So should we, or on page seven, Ethel Wolf, we're spending, another Brooklyn project, we're spending $165,000, and Ethel is not supporting it any longer. So should we be reviewing some of them? While the overall percentage is fine, some of the percentages are completely different from what we approved of in 1996, or in this case, 1976. Mr. Chairman, I don't know, you want to approach?
Karen?
Well, I'm on the campus of John Jay, and if you, my experience is that these centers are for research that draws upon the expertise of the faculty of that college. So, for example, the Brooklyn Center, which I'm not familiar with, for the study of children, is, I assume, because one of the great strengths of Brooklyn College is childhood education. John Jay, which, as you know, is the College of Criminal Justice, if you look, if you're good enough to look on page twenty-three and twenty-four and twenty-five, and maybe twenty-six? Yes, twenty-six and twenty-seven, these, such as Center on Crime Prevention and Control, Center on Terrorism, Center for International Human Rights, and so forth, Institute for Criminal Justice Ethics, Center for Media Crime and Justice, these, Prisoner Reentry Institute, these draw on and enable the faculty, draw on the expertise of the faculty, enable faculty to work together, create research, disseminate the research, hold conferences, give talks, which is constant, and seek funding. And it's a way of including students, many, many students are research, not fellows, but are engaged, including under, especially undergraduate students, in the research with faculty. And reports are generated, papers are published, our Center on Ethics in, Institute for Criminal Justice Ethics publishes a brilliant journal that has for about fifteen years, that's internationally renowned. So these are not entities that I think can be measured by dollars, but by a larger construct of both what they contribute to the college, but to the, to the world in terms of knowledge and the opportunities it gives faculty and students to share knowledge and create knowledge, and then disseminate knowledge. So I, I think that if I hadn't been at John Jay, where these are so vibrant, these centers and institutes, I would not appreciate the extent to which they, they serve an invaluable purpose. Not to say that they shouldn't be self-funded.
Well, I'm, I'm sure, no doubt, when you fund good people doing good research, you're going to get good results. But that's not the issue. The issue is, this was presented to the trustees as self-funded, and looking at a budget crunch as we're looking at severe, as we are now, you know, I could give you a thousand good projects, and I'd like to have the faculty of our university study for me, but if I tell you, I'm going to pay for it, and then the state pays for it, that's a whole different deal. And I think we should think about how we want to approach this.
What are you proposing to do?
I don't want to propose anything right now. I'd like to ask the administration what to think about it and recommend to us. I understand if we're, if somebody's funding twenty-five and we're funding ten, that's one thing, but if we're funding $200,000 and they're funding zero, that's quite another. Each case is, I, I wouldn't say stop funding it, but I, I think it needs a review. I wouldn't just rub a stamp, continue.
Well, I, I do think that the colleges do review this. I know at John Jay, we just closed four centers because we didn't think that the support we provided was worth the, the results, and so I think this is something that is regularly done on the campuses.
Right.
Let me jump in, just to anticipate. I, I just had to make a presentation on our operating budget, which was approved, so. Let me talk to your point about the, the work that we're doing now. We are facing severe pressures, as I just told the Fiscal Affairs Committee. In the last two years, we have lost over $200 million in our operating budget. I was on the phone with the Budget Director just a few weeks ago, and he indicated to me that we have yet another hit for this academic year. The governor's proposal to close a $250 million gap never materialized, and on top of the numbers I've already mentioned to you, there's another $20 million, which was supposed to result from labor savings. I will tell you, in, not in uncertain terms, in most uncertain terms, that when the budget is adopted for 2011, 2012, I believe that we will be facing yet a nine-figure cut, which is $100 million or more. And I can't guarantee that that is indeed the case, and. And part of the problem that we have is that we have an outgoing administration that is developing a budget. I would imagine the presumptive, the presumptive winner of the election tomorrow, his staff has been working very closely with the DOB. So I don't think that they're doing this in the cloak of darkness. I think there is, there is a sense that there is coordination and communication between the outgoing administration and who we believe the incoming administration is. Having said that, we're facing severe stress in the, in our financial world. We will be able to manage it, and part, and here comes to my point, Trustee Sutton. Two and a half years ago, we appointed three working groups. An operating working group, a, a working group connected with monetizing our physical assets, and a working group that looks at our operating guidelines and how those guidelines might be able to be adjusted to allow us to spend much more efficaciously. I will be reporting out in November, given that Fiscal Affairs has just approved a tuition program that I brought to, to Fiscal Affairs. I will be coming in with a spending reduction program, along with a revenue enhancement program to deal with the budget cuts that we have, we anticipate receiving. I've also said that I am unalterably opposed to retrenchment. I think saving jobs is, for me, a number-one priority. And number two, maintaining the vibrancy of our academic life. And number three, that we protect much of the newest people that we have brought to the university, who are some of the most extraordinary women and men, and I'm talking largely about faculty. As it relates to centers and institutes, we spend money. We don't spend a lot of money out of our budget. I mean, it is, to my estimation, not material relative to where the big money is in the university. But we are looking at savings on centers and institutes as well. Clearly, if a center director has indicated that they will generate resources and they don't, we may give them a pass or two for a couple of years, three years, four years, because it brings academic and intellectual vibrancy. And sometimes you can't necessarily put a tag on that. But the budget that we use now to support centers and institutes are on the list of savings that we will be bringing to, that I will be bringing, or one of our vice chancellors will be bringing to the board in November. And so it's not something that we are unaware of. It's not something I'm overly concerned about, because it is relatively small money. Where we are spending very big money, where we're not getting the punch that we really want, that's the thing that we're going to be focusing mainly about. I don't know if that, I don't know what your question was, but I anticipate that that's what it was.
As trustee, I'm turning to the administration to evaluate it for us. I'm glad to hear that John Jay closed three or four centers or institutes that they felt were not productive. I, I would probably ask the administration to go evaluate if every school was being as proactive and as efficient as John Jay has been. And this also only reports the funding of the last year. Could be four years before, the last four years prior to that that was funded properly, like the chancellor said. So it's not something, this information is inadequate to make a full review, but if the chancellor has it on his radar and is already full of doing that, then we await your final decisions.
See, we, we invest about a dollar and get back eight, nine, $10. So sometimes you have to do that. I mean, we're bringing in a considerable amount of external dollars into our centers and institutes, and the only reason we're able to do this is that we make some investment. So I don't, you know, just look at this as dollars in, dollars out. This is a great investment to attract public, to attract external money. It's a great investment to attract some of our most able and promising scholars, and it's a great investment to burnish the reputation of the university. So it is an issue, but I don't think it's a burning issue relative to other major things that we have to look at.
Justice Shorah?
Do students get credit or certificates for many of these centers or institutes?
It varies a lot. So some of them are primarily for research, some have primarily educational functions, in which case they would be given courses and certificates. It just depends.
Any other questions? Okay. Item two, two B.
Okay. This is the information item on Amendment of Section 6.2.2(c) of the Board Bylaws. This resolution clarifies Section 6.2, which specifies that a person holding a tenured position in another institution may be appointed at CUNY with immediate tenure at the board's discretion. Such practice is common at institutions of higher education across the U.S. However, because the current bylaws language omits the specific mention of the associate rank, associate professor rank, this has led to two different processes for appointments with immediate tenure, when the appointment was to the rank of full professor and when it was to the rank of associate professor, creating unnecessary bureaucratic hurdles for the campuses and unnecessary action items for the board. The new language would streamline the process. Notice of this amendment was given at the September 27, 2010, meeting of the Board of Trustees. The amendment will be voted on at one of the upcoming meetings.
This does not, ma'am?
Sure.
Just to clarify, this does not mean that a college is required to grant tenure to an associate professor.
Absolutely not.
I didn't, I know. I just noted that on the record.
Yeah, all it means is, yeah, you already know the answer to that. All it means is that if a college wants to, it's easier, easier for it to do so.
Very good. Thank you.
So can we move on to the item 2c, report by the Vice Chancellor, Jillian Small?
Thank you. A brief, a brief update on some of the research activities at the university. It's critically important to the university to ensure that our campuses are attractive and supportive institutions in which to study and perform research, so that they can develop, recruit, and retain the best and brightest students, as well as faculty from across the country. Over the past several years, we've made great strides towards that end, and I just want to mention a few of those initiatives that we've implemented and then summarize some of the outcomes thus far. In order to support the research of our faculty and students, it's clearly essential to provide state-of-the-art facilities. Until recently, our science facilities were in ill repair or outdated at many campuses. Thus currently, over the next five years or so, and currently, we are projected to spend well in excess of $1 billion on construction and modernization of science facilities, including new science buildings at many of our senior campuses, as well as refurbishment of science facilities at many other CUNY campuses. This is all being done under the sterling guidance of Vice Chancellor Weinshell. Also, building new buildings that, several campuses that include, as part of that building, new science facilities. The centerpiece of this effort is the CUNY-wide Advanced Science Research Center, which is a two-phase plan. The first phase consists of a 200,000-square-foot building that will support high-end research in five emerging science disciplines: photonics, nanoscience, neuroscience, structural biology, and environmental sciences. High-end core facilities and instrumentation in the ASRC will allow our scientists from across CUNY to expand the scope and scale of their research endeavors. And we just recently did the topping-off ceremony for the, for the ASRC. Very much pertaining to the item we just discussed, we recently established a CUNY Energy Institute. I think if you look at the chart on the bottom of page 11, it's listed as the Clean Fuels Institute, which had become a little moribund, but we reinvigorated it two years ago, renamed it as the Energy Institute. And although it's, it's located at City College as its home campus, it includes faculty from across the university. The institute is directed by one of our new hires, distinguished Professor Sandro Bannery, who's developing innovative approaches towards a sustainable energy strategy. And he recently, they recently competed successfully for highly prestigious grants from the Department of Energy to support their efforts in developing new battery technology. Overall, the Energy Institute has attracted over $6 million in funding in the two years since it was established. So these numbers are very much outdated in this chart. There is potential in some of the institutes. The quality of the faculty is clearly essential to achieving the most innovative teaching and research in the sciences. Since 1998, CUNY has added more than 1,200 new full-time faculty in total to its ranks, in part by selecting targeted areas, such as those to be supportive in the ASRC. And continued cluster hiring in designated disciplines is infusing these areas with highly talented faculty. Many of our faculty, especially those newly hired, are not aware of their colleagues and their colleagues' research across the campuses. Therefore, we've been engaged in building scientific communities across the CUNY campuses. As part of these efforts, we've been holding workshops and forums, constructed in a way to bring CUNY faculty together to view and discuss each other's research in a casual setting. And outside speakers and representatives from federal funding agencies have also been invited to these sessions, both to validate the quality of existing programming and to provide a sense of what the future holds in, in the funding pipeline. We also believe it's critical to engage students in research at the earliest possible stage and encourage that interest throughout their careers at CUNY. To this end, we've launched a number of initiatives that include a new CUNY undergraduate summer research program that provides an opportunity for a number of students to have an extensive research experience. We won, one of our faculty for 10 weeks during the summer, and then we bring all the students together for, once a week, for a research seminar or training session at the McCauley Young's College. In addition to that, many of our campuses have their own summer research opportunities for students. Also, as part of our efforts to encourage students to think about the sciences, last year, we launched an annual CUNY Nobel Science Challenge that asks our undergraduate students to write an essay that describes the science behind the prizes awarded that year for physics, chemistry, physiology, medicine, and economics. And to write an essay that will make that science accessible to the layperson. This challenge has raised a great deal of interest from our undergraduates and from, from all disciplines, not just the sciences. Research has also become one of the keys to economic development, and we are expanding the university's role in facilitating the economic development and prosperity of New York City and state by promoting public benefit from the commercialization of technologies emerging from our faculty's research. This may include the creation of new startup companies and encouraging, as well as encouraging active collaboration between the university and industry. We're currently engaged in fostering external research collaborations, both with other academic institutions and with industry. One example stemming from the IBM Smarter Citizen Initiative led to the formation of research teams from CUNY, NYU, and IBM, working on issues around energy, water, security, and transportation. We've also signed a memorandum of understanding with the Director of Brookhaven National Labs with the goals towards increasing the use of their facilities and expanding interactions of CUNY students and faculty with Brookhaven. These and many other initiatives that we have supported at the university over the past few years are clearly paying off. 10 years ago, the total external grants and contracts at the university was $214 million, and in 2010, it was almost double that, approximately $410 million. Regarding research specifically, which is mostly federally funded, in 2000, the external grants for research at CUNY was a little under $50 million. And in 2010, we tripled that number, bringing in approximately $152 million. I believe much of this increase has come in the last few years, and I think it pays tribute to our many wonderful and distinguished research-active faculty and their students currently at the university. Thank you.
Anything else? Let me have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Willie.
Thank you.
Maybe I could?
Yeah.
I ran late with a metropod.